Kids that have braces have great teeth.
Some.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of April 27, 2021. I'd like to take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda, seconded by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to thank EB Cam as always for their support in televising our meetings to the public. And I would also like to welcome Scott Walker to the committee and congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you over the next few years. So welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right. So in our agenda, first we have a proposal from Carly Forsette, an East Bridgewater teacher and coach for memorial in honor of Michaela Kingman, an East Bridgewater softball player and graduate. Is Carly here? Would you like to come up and speak?
So we propose a memorial for my classmate, my teammate, and she's my best friend. He unfortunately passed away last year. We have a proposal for a memorial out at the softball field, under the scoreboard. And we have raised all the money for it, so we just kind of need approval for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion?
We don't have any issues with it out on this floor.
Okay.
And there is a nice write-up that was provided.
Yep.
Talking about Michaela.
Yep. My only question is, and Mrs. Pennington, you might be able to shed some light on this. We had some discussion last year about the naming of a bench at Mitchell. And we had some discussion about policy regarding that. Is there anything in school committee policy that would stand in the way of us approving this?
No.
Okay. Discussion or questions from anyone else? It is not, this isn't actually an item for later on. So I would take a motion at this time to approve the addition of a memorial in honor of Michaela Kingman at the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School softball field.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda?
Second.
Seconded by Ellen. All in favor? Aye. Carla, thank you for coming down to speak for us. And I know this is something that's very passionate for you. And we're happy to support this and happy to memorialize her. So, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Carly.
Is Lisa Verasso here? Hey, Lisa.
Hi.
So Lisa's here to speak on some generous donations we've gotten.
Yeah.
Sure.
So we obviously had to take a hiatus last year for Little Vikings, which broke everybody's heart. So I'm excited to say that we are back. It has gone crazy. Obviously, parents miss it, children miss it. So classes are filling up already and we haven't even hit May yet, so that's a good thing. So I just wanted to thank our sponsors. So South Shore Bank, I have Norine Cahill here, who has been a sponsor with us since, this is our sixth year, Little Vikings, and South Shore Bank has been with us for five. Bluestone Bank, which used to be Bridgewater Savings Bank, they also rejoined us this year. Three other of the sponsors could not be here tonight. Happy Frog, who donated their graphic designs. I put up hair and she makes it magic. And I actually got a new sponsor over this pandemic and it's Pinches and Pounds, who's donated some surprise sweets for both parents and children. I don't want to get into it because I don't want to give away the surprise. I don't know who's watching, but it's going to be a fun summer. So this year, parents need a break. I'm lucky because my kids are grown, so I can't imagine what parents of younger children have been through this year. So there was, I decided I wanted to take in a little bit of a different direction this year. I wanted to take care of the parents as much as the students. So there was a little hashtag self-care. So in doing that, we were able to, because of our great sponsors, roll back the prices to 2015, when Little Vikings first started, which is $99. Sign two kids up, another one is half price. I offered, which is going crazy, I offered, if you sign up for Little Vikings, even if it's one week, you get one day of the 2020 Little Vikings season. So you pick one day out of the five weeks where you get a self-care day. So the child can go to before and after care for free. So you can basically drop your child off at seven in the morning, pick them up at seven at night, and go have a me-day. And then there's one other couple of things that I'm not going to say because I don't know who's watching and who these kids are coming. So we wanted to take care of the parents as much as we wanted to take care of the kids because we're all exhausted, we're all done. I just heard tonight in the news, I was getting all excited, masks going to be off outside, which is so huge for the kids. So I'm hoping that a little more time, maybe we can go inside with them, but we're going to make do with whatever. And we're out to have a fun summer. And I just wanted to, it's all because of our sponsors. I wouldn't be able to do what I did this year without them.
Thank you.
This is Verasso. This speaks to who you are, like thinking outside of the box and thinking about the parents as well. So you're really appreciated in all your efforts and the sponsors as well for continuing to support.
Thank you.
The program.
It's been a long year for everybody, so I think we all just need a break and we all need to just step back and enjoy life again, so.
And we've never met, but I just want to say that, you know, having had two children who went through before and after care before you were in your position, I'm so impressed with the program you run. You run a tight ship and you run a great program and people are impressed with it.
Thank you very much. So I couldn't do it with the great staff I have. It's definitely a team effort on all accounts. But I love what I do and hopefully it comes across, so.
We have one quick question. I did actually have a sixth grade parent ask and my own child asked. The book says that Little Vikings' summer is for through sixth grade. Now, is that for if you're going into sixth grade in the fall or if you are currently a sixth?
Yep. So that's actually a great question. And I've had a couple of parents email me about that. So the first couple of years of Little Vikings, it was pre-K to eight. And we brought it down to six because a lot of times the seventh and eighth graders just didn't want to be there and their parents made them go. And women that, like, and let's be honest with you, if you have a grumpy, I have kids that are grown, so if you have kids in seventh or eighth grade and they don't want to be somewhere with those younger kids, they're going to make it miserable to everybody. So how we did it is we just, I said, okay, let's bring it down to grade six. And if there's a child going into seventh grade or going into eighth grade that really, really wants to come to camp, they're not a troublemaker. They're not going to aggravate the little kids. They're not going to have an attitude that they don't want to be here. And every year I get several kids going into seventh and eighth grade. So they can absolutely attend. I do actually have a lot of kids. I don't want to say, I have quite a few parents that have reached out because their kids missed out on it last year. So they want to come back and they're coming. I've gotten them. So yep, so if you have kids, and I don't care if the kids are in ninth grade, if they want to come to camp and they want to enjoy, I have no problem with it.
Will you take a three-year-old?
Actually, we have the preschool program, so we do. We take them out.
I don't know how my summer's going to get.
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I take a motion to approve the donations of $1,450 from South Shore Bank, $1,000 from Bluestone Bank, $500 from Pinches and Pounds, and $500 from Happy Frogs. Moved by Ellen?
Second.
Seconded by Trista. All in favor? Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Joanne, do you have your cellphone? Could we take a picture of South Shore Bank? And Lisa and the school committee for the donation on South Shore Bank, please?
Sure.
With Norine.
Why don't we, why don't Ellen, Trista and I come over here and stand behind Ford now?
And Liz?
John, you don't want to be a part of this? Do you want to come over here? We'll do a quick question.
You can go right across the front.
Sit on the chair. No.
Oh, I was just going to say, where do we go?
I'm not like the tallest little single.
Hey, everybody. I'm going to take a few. Do you want to get closer to Ellen?
Ellen's the one that doesn't like you. Smile. Thank you so much. Norine, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lisa, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for asking that. I have a sixth grader who's, I'm like, what am I going to do?
All right. Moving on, a report from the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Student Advisory Council. Representative Kira, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. What do you have for us?
All right. So quick, some music updates. So of course, Re Life for Life's still going on. If you want to donate, reach out to Mr. Ashfield, Mrs. MP at the music department. You know this reel already. We're really close to reaching our goal, so I really recommend that you please donate. Also about band, the music program is finishing up, wrapping, is finishing up the recordings for our spring concert. As many of you may know, we are not able to hold our annual spring concert. And so what we've been doing is we've been recording it by group after school. And so that is also being put together by lovely EB Cam. And so that should be out within the next couple of weeks. Just a quick reminder to any students that are listening, if they're in any AP exams, today is, or rather, I think today is the last day to opt out of any AP exams. So if anyone wants to opt out quickly, get it in now. And then lastly, spring sports started yesterday. I know a lot of students are very excited to have these back. Every day after school, by the track, the football field, tennis courts, they're all busy. And I think that a lot of students are very excited to have these back.
Great. So the fall two season is all over now. That was weird to begin with, but it was great that the kids were able to have a season.
Yeah, it was tough. They have over 240 students out for the spring.
Is that how many?
It's packed.
Wow.
It's packed.
I'm glad the weather cooperated with winter too and I'm glad the kids were able to get out there and do the spring.
The weather's been beautiful for us lately, too.
That's great. And also, I just want to say, I kind of jumped the gun with your congratulations a few months ago, but on your decision to attend Yale next fall, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Very proud of you. Mom must be proud of you as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Superintendent S. Connor?
So we, I met with the subcommittee last night on my evaluation. In your packets, there is a, I believe everybody got a timeline for the packet. On the 25th, we'll go over it. I think we'll set it up. I think it's easier to read now. I think it's much easier to go through the eval and the way that we set it up or the way I think that I helped set it up, so it's a little bit easier than what we have been doing and to follow sort of the matrix of what the eval is. Even though that you see everything that we do on the school committee meetings, you watch us every day, or people see some of the things it's hard to evaluate us on because you think, you might know, you think you know what you see, or it looks like this. But once you get into it, and so we'll have a little bit more meat and potatoes in the evaluation that you'll be able to see. Couple of things, I sent a letter out to the district today on the central, we're on our descent. So this is it. This is the fastest eight weeks of the school year. And any student, especially seniors, this seems very fast. It goes extremely fast. For them, the events will start coming on a weekly basis now. Exams will start to come. And so, and then they're out the door. And then we have graduation. And they've got a week pretty much on their own before they even come back and walk the stage on the Sunday. We're going to hold Field Day at Mitchell School. We're going to hold Field Day for Central School. We've, going to get outside, we'll keep our masks on, we'll continue to hold our diligence and the protocols of with the masks when we're outside, even though today the governor and the commissioner, we had a meeting at 2:30 with the commissioner, but the commissioner would like us to keep our masks on outside when we are with the students and the students with each other. We're going to be having, I talked to my leadership team yesterday. So we've got Central School Field Day, the Run for Life for, down at the Mitchell School is next week, I believe. He's excited about that, Mr. Gent, very excited, can't wait to see the kids out there. And I think the kids are very excited. It's really fun. The company that comes in and does it with Mitchell School is terrific. We've got a lot of things on the docket. We're going to move forward with all of them. But one of the things that has come up, we've been in the queue for the last two years on the Central School Roof Project. It's a $1.2 million project. We get 54, 56% given back to us by the state. So we've been in this project, we've been waiting for this project, we've been allotted this project, and we're trying to move on the project. The week before April vacation, Brian Kylie, our facilities director, came in and buildings director came in and said, we have an opportunity to bring the masons in and bring in some of the scaffolding that will help us get moving on the building. We're concerned with some of the weather that we saw last year. You know, we had the high winds and like some hurricane types of storms in June and July. So I allowed them to come in last week over April vacation because we didn't have anything at Central School last week. We had no children there, we had no teachers there. We just were doing inside work and it was pretty much, and we, I think we had one of the couple of custodian on vacation. So we were in good shape over there. And both principals, Principal Byrne and the Assistant Principal Nichols, both were on vacation last week. I gave all of my principals vacation last week, so they didn't have to come in. It's been a long year for them, as it has been for teachers, so we wanted all of them to take a break. We had the scaffolding brought in, they brought in some big booms, the big lifts that are over there and surrounding the school. They were able to start some repointing of the bricks, I believe they call it, and the masons are here. They set up scaffolding in the back and it's been pushed up against the building. And they've got these two lifts that can lift these guys up to the top of the building. They asked if they could bring in these two huge big machines, they call them the booms. One can go up, I believe, 138 feet in the air to reach the cupola. They wanted to get and start the cupola work on the top. They feel that that is going to take, it's very time-consuming. Brian wanted to get them up there, they wanted to get up there. One day, they couldn't get up there because of the wind. So they, now they had four days, or, you know. So we allowed that work to begin. So that's why you saw the machinery there. As you know, there's some people, some companies don't have enough contracting, construction workers. Their people aren't working, so, but now they're coming back to work. So we're getting more people, from what my understandings are, so the masons are there. So they're getting people. We also have the pallets of the architectural shingle. We wanted a 50-year architectural shingle. They do not make them, they can't, they're not making them right now. We could not find them, we could not get them. We got a change order with the MSBA, with our architectural company. We found a 30-year architectural shingle. It is brought in, half of the squares that we need for the Central School roof are here in the back next to the mods of the pre-K in that, where we usually store some of the, in the winter, you'll see some of the plows back there. We have half of the shingles here. We're waiting for another shipment or another allotment of the rest of the shingles. They're trying to set up for June 22 start. That would be when we close Central School down. We'll be shutting off all entryways in and out of Central School. All of the playground equipment, like the swings, that will be taken down. The seesaw will be unattached, put down. It will be roped off and there will be no, nobody at the mods, no one inside the school. We're moving, actually, Mrs. Byrne, Mrs. Nichols out. They'll come over here just to have an office, so if they want to come in. They don't work the whole summer, but they are to come in on August 1st. So we want to make sure they have a home and we'll set up an office down here because Mrs. Byrne brings a lot of things with her. And so, but we're going to set Mrs. Byrne up. So on May 10th, we had a meeting yesterday with Mrs. Rosso, Mrs. Byrne, Dr. Williams, Mr. Shea, Mr. Kylie, myself. The company, the masons, have asked if they could start on May 10th to continue the repointing and the brickwork in the columns around the building. So what we decided to do is to move, they'll start at 4:00 PM in the afternoon. We, all of our buses are out by 3:20, at the latest, 3:15 to 3:20, at the latest, if we're running late. And our teachers are usually out of the building by that time. Allow them to come in and start working at 4:00 PM to continue to repoint the building at that time. There'll be nothing in Central School. So what we're going to do, and in my letter today stated, that we will be moving the aftercare from Central School to Mitchell School for the remainder of the school year. From May 10th on, we will be transporting all students down from Central School to the Mitchell School on their own bus. The bus will be leaving at 3:30. It'll be the first run, the first bus that comes in to pick up students at Central School, it's going to go out, drop off, come back around, and they will pick up our students with two of the aftercare workers, with Mrs. Verasso's crew. They'll ride the bus down with the students down to Central School and they will have the same opportunities that they did at, I mean, down to Mitchell School and have the same opportunities they had at Central School. I know people don't like the movement when we're moving young children, whether it's pre-K, K1 or 2, in a before-aftercare program. However, we want to get a jump on this so that come August, we are ready to go for the first day of school and we are clean. The playground is set up, we've got a new roof, we're putting new windows in. We had some money left over from an article two years ago for windows. We also had some money that will be left over from the roofing project that can do some of the soffit work that, I guess, covers the windows. So we're going to be putting new windows in as well as this. So we're allocating a lot right now and we want to make sure that we can get the windows in and the roof on prior to the opening of school. So I know there was a little bit of movement and I know that people don't like late letters like we got today. All I can say is I tried to put everything in there. You know, we're on our final descent. It's a long year, it's been a long, two years for us, or a long year and a half since March 13th of 2020. It's been a long time. We're now here, we're coming back, we've got everybody back. We're one of the first school districts that brought everybody back. We haven't had, we're not in trouble with quarantines, we're not in trouble with not making our days. We're not in trouble with people not getting vaccinations. We're not in trouble with our graduation population. We had more seniors show up this week, we're happy. We still had over 100 students at the high school, still wanted to stay home and do virtual learning. The commissioner told us today, we can still, we can still accept that and we'll still go through with that. We have less than 50, we have 12 students left, five students in each group, but I think Mrs. Byrne told me she had a couple of students today, so I think she's down under 12 today or at 12 at Central School. Most of that is students that either might live with a grandparent or who have an immune deficiency. And at the Mitchell School, we're at about, between, I think, 37 or 38, he said yesterday. So I mean, we're doing well as a district, we want to keep that momentum up, we want the excitement for kids. We want kids to come back to school and people need to remember that come September of next year or August, kids have to come back to school. There's, so that's the big, on the Central School roofing project. I know that people don't like to see the equipment out there with the kids there. We certainly understand that. We did call the company. Mrs. Byrne got some calls yesterday, we called Brian Kylie. This is their forte, this is what they do when they work with the OPMs. They called the OPMs, we've moved out the biggest booms out of there. We've moved the equipment to a different area so that it's less sticking out, I guess we should say, so that people aren't nervous with it. But we did remove some of that equipment. We removed the largest lift today. The company understands, it's just they, they're going to have to bring it in and out. And if we could, I would have moved it out onto the grass. But we're now into softball season and we need that field and there'd be no way. I couldn't put it out there and plus that field gets very wet, we would have sunk. So they're going to try to build the catwalk to the, so on May 10th through, till June 22nd, one of the biggest projects is the scaffolding. You will see on the front part of the building, on the front facade of Central School, they're going to build it over the boiler room entrance, up to the roof, and they're going to put a catwalk to the cupola. So they can finish that. And they'll have, they're going to have a catwalk so they can walk the building from all sides as they bring up equipment. So people will see that. And then by June 22nd, there will be chains and there'll be, what do they say? Everything will be roped off, you won't be able to drive even in there. It'll only be construction people that will be allowed. And there will be signs dedicated for that. So I feel like we're on top of that. And I do think that Brian has done the work that he needed to do. He's continuing to talk with Mr. Shea. We've got a good plan. I sent that letter out today. I do want everybody to know that Mrs. Verasso and Mrs. Byrne will be sending out individual letters from their, Mrs. Byrne will send one from Central School to talk to staff about what's going on, where they can park, or any other movement that they need to know. She will also be sending a letter to parents for any things that will need to be changed. So, or, and we don't anticipate any changes for drop-off or pickup or anything else like that. But Mrs. Byrne is going to, after today's letter, I've asked them to hold off for a day, let my letter go out, Mrs. Byrne will then send her letter. Then those that are in the aftercare, Mrs. Verasso will send her letter. And we will know at that time who the bus driver is when Mrs. Verasso sends her letter, who the two people or the staffing that will be riding the bus, how many students will be on the bus, so we'll have those logistics. My letter was more of, this is what's happening at the district, this is where we're at, and this is where we're going. Just a couple other things. The commissioner wants us to stay tight on, with, inside the building, with the students in the cafeteria, we're going to keep the plexiglass up. We'll keep the plexiglass up in the offices. We'll keep the sneeze guards in classrooms. For those that are using them, we'll be able, we're still staying at three feet. We don't have any buildings or classrooms that have gone under that. And the cafeterias will remain the same at the Mitchell School and the Central School and the movement on that. We do anticipate a nice night for the proms, we hope, and that there's no rain. We hope it's nice and warm and we hope the kids have a wonderful time. And I know that some people want a seven-hour prom or a six-hour prom, I get it. We're doing the best that we can with what we are given. And they have ordered tents, heaters, DJs, food trucks. The town is working with us, I can't say enough about the Board of Health and obviously, we've talked about Sumaloi a lot. The office of, I mean, the permits, they've been giving the permits to the food trucks. They haven't had any issues with them and the food trucks have been coming in. And I think we've got three or four right now that have been given permits. And so we're on target for two nice nights, we hope. And, you know, I think it's May 15th and 16th, junior prom.
Yeah, so senior prom is Friday, May 14th.
Oh, 14th.
And junior prom is Saturday, May 15th.
So I mean, we, I mean, what a nice night, you know, and a couple of nights. And then you've got ESY this summer, we're going to run it, we're going to run it full and every student is, will be in person. We have been told by the commissioner today, Russell Johnson, the deputy commissioner on for special education, that ESY is to be that E S Y is to be in person, that virtual needs to stop. We need to get students, those that are in need or with I E Ps need to come back to school. We want them face-to-face, we want them with us, and we need to start gearing up. We also, Dr. Williams is going to run a ramp-up program. We're looking at even extending the E S Y outside of students with an I E P, looking for students that did have some setbacks, loss of learning. We're going to put that in place, and that will all be held here at the high school because it has air conditioning, along with little Vikings. We're going to push that envelope to students who need support, but we're also looking at a ramp-up program, probably two weeks outside of the opening of the school year for next year, for those students who are going to go into algebra. Those students going to go from algebra to algebra two, those students that need some help in writing, those students that we saw in their MAP scores that they might have regressed. We are looking at, they, I, Dr. Williams had a meeting today with Jim McPartland, one of the, are the facilitator who runs the MAP program and I Ready. They are looking at that data, they're getting the data together right now to say what students need support, what students need us right now, face-to-face. So we are ready for that, we have the funding, we have the S R grants, we have, we also are going to take some students to work with UMass Dartmouth, and I'll be talking about that program in a couple of week, weeks. Karen Clifford, we, we went out for a career exploration grant, boy, three years ago. We had to put it on hold last year. We have about thirty-six thousand dollars in that career exploration. We're going to be using that grant money to take kids for enrichment, eighth and ninth graders, and then we have a couple of twelfth graders that may not have applied to schools because they weren't sure what was going on. We did talk to UMass Dartmouth, they would be accepting them if they wanted to take a, a chance at UMass Dartmouth. So Karen Clifford, Mr. Sylvia, Mr. Clements are working with the colleges around. We are pushing, we do have a career and expression grant for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but we, the grant said that we can expound it now because those students were in sixth grade when we got the grant. Now they're in ninth grade because of the timing and when, when Desi releases that. So I think we're in good shape with academics, we're in good shape with athletics, we're in good shape with our graduating class, we're in good shape with the central roof project. And I guess I would ask if there's any questions of me tonight. I think we've, I think I've pretty much said everything that has been on my plate for the last couple of weeks, and we've got everything out. So it's up to John now to.
Before you move on, I just wanted to mention to the rest of the committee, so the, the evaluation subcommittee met last night, and you know, we came up with a few dates. So the superintendent's going to present her goals and evidence on the twenty-fifth of May at our meeting. So following that meeting, the rest of the committee will have fourteen days, two weeks, to write their own evaluations and, based on that evidence and their observations in, in that meeting. So it'll be at, for, for Lauren and for Scott, it'll be your discretion what role you decide to play in that. You know, that's where you're, you're just new on the committee and weren't here for the full year. I will support whatever level of involvement you want to be, have in that process. For, but for all six of the committee members, you know, we will have to submit your copy of the evaluation rubric by the eleventh, and I'll be happy to meet with any of you individually to go through it and just explain anything that you may have questions about. Following, so that eleventh is a hard deadline. Following that meeting, following that deadline, the evaluation subcommittee will get back together to compile all six of the evaluations into one master superintendent's evaluation. I will meet with her the day, says the twenty-second, we'll, we'll see. Sometime before our meeting on the twenty-second, I will sit down with the superintendent and present her with what's going to be presented at the meeting. We don't want to have no surprises, nothing that's just brought up at the meeting, I want her to be able to see it ahead of time. So we'll sit down and go over that, and then we will present it and go over it at the meeting on, on June twenty-second. So I'm available for any questions that any of you guys may have in the process between now and then. And I will get to all copies of the superintendent's evaluation rubric just to look over, so if you have any questions about that.
And Tim, if I can just add, in the past, for newer members, we've had a workshop on the actual evaluation, so it's a little different than just sitting and writing an evaluation. It's very in-depth and, not intricate, but there's a lot of pieces, so.
A lot of categories.
There's a lot of categories and things you're assessing, so there is the opportunity to participate, you know, for Lauren and Scott, but don't feel like you have to, because as new members, sometimes it's good to kind of sit back and watch the process be done and understand how the evaluation is done.
That's all I had, any questions or comments?
Any questions on the roofing project or anything? I just want to make sure.
All right. So we have a couple of discussion items. First is, we've had discussions within the committee about the idea of moving our meetings from seven back to six-thirty, and that's, just trying to be mindful of everyone's time, and a lot of us have families, and you know, at, at the end of a long day, maybe getting out of here at eight instead of eight-thirty or eight-forty-five might be a, you know, a welcome change for some of us. So I'd like, I, I, we, we had a conversation about doing it, and I realized that the calendar that we put out and voted on actually says at the top of it, meetings will be at seven o'clock, so we have to vote to change it to six-thirty. The idea would be that we would have our meetings going forward after tonight at six-thirty PM here. If for some reason we need to meet in executive session, we will do that at six-thirty and then meet afterwards at seven o'clock or seven-fifteen, or whatever time is appropriate. So we'll start no earlier than six-thirty, but it'll be a regular, the idea would be that it would be a regular practice that we would meet at six-thirty. I wanted to wait, to defer, I know Teresa with taxis, and that was really, or had kind of spun when I brought that up, but I think now is an appropriate time to, to have that conversation. Are there any questions or comments or conversation about that idea? So I would take a motion to actually, going forward for the rest of the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one school year, move the school committee meetings from seven PM to six-thirty PM.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Ellen?
Second.
Second by Trista, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Second.
I did, yeah.
Why did you, why did he, did he need to abstain?
Oh, no, I, no, he can, he can.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if there was a procedural reason why he couldn't vote on that.
Oh, no, no, he can vote on that.
Okay. We also have had, you know, tossed around the idea of looking at our upcoming calendar, and this is not for this school year, and I, I think, talking to Barbara, she may have been a little confused that I was talking about the upcoming year, not for the remainder of this year. But I would like to move forward with the idea of planning for, you know, kind of trying to streamline school committee operations a little bit in the upcoming year. You know, if you look at the, the purpose of the school committee, it's to pass policy, to evaluate the superintendent, and to create and pass the budget. You know, those are the three core goals of the committee, and we have other obligations as well during our meetings. But I, I feel like we, we, I'd, I'd love to see us kind of try to get back to that as the core point of our meetings, is to conduct the business of the school committee, rather than have it be an open forum on the, the schools. We're certainly, we'll continue to have public, you know, public comment and the ability to have the public interact with us, but I'd like to be a little more businesslike in our approach to how we conduct things. So I'd like to move.
Can I interject?
Well, I'm not, let me finish. I, I realize that there are parts of the year that it is prudent for us to meet more than once a month. Budget season is busy in March, the superintendent's evaluation towards the end of the year may require more than a monthly meeting. So I'm not proposing that we only have.
We still have other things, though, not just about that.
I'm not saying that we would only have a monthly meeting all year long. There would be certainly times during the year that we would need to, and then we would still also have the option, if we feel like there's more business that needs to be conducted by the committee, to schedule a second meeting for that month. There's nothing that precludes us from, on November third, realizing that we needed a second meeting that month and saying, let's meet on November seventeenth, two Tuesdays from then. But I just think as general practice, we can conduct the business of the committee once a month rather than twice.
Mrs. Penn.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So I've been on this committee quite a long time, as most of you probably know. And in speaking with M A S C Field Rep, which I did do my homework before I speak, I always do my homework. A majority of school committees meet twice a month. And where, so we oversee policy, budget, the superintendent, but we also oversee the strategic plan for the school district, and we should be getting updates on the strategic plan. So for example, and let me just go back to two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. I have the minutes from a meeting in May of two thousand sixteen, where the school committee, we used to have one meeting a month, we went to two meetings a month. It was decided at this meeting because the meetings were too long and we had a lot to discuss. And we also have a year-long calendar where we would discuss items from the strategic plan, which we have gotten away from because of COVID, which is completely understandable. So I feel like we, as a school committee, should be hearing about things from the strategic plan, such as technology, curriculum. Let's see, we hear about special education, guidance is going to be, you know, we're going to be talking about that too. There are things that we should be discussing. We, as a school committee, should be hearing about these things, the parents should be hearing about these things, and the community members should be hearing about these things. And I think it's a very bad idea to go to one meeting a month, every single month. It's going to, I feel it's going to set us back. Now, if you wanted to say, in November and December, when we only had one meeting most of those months, that would be fine to have one meeting, but I feel like a majority of the school year, we should be having two meetings a month.
And if I can add to that, I agree with what Ellen's saying. I do feel that there are months where we could probably have one meeting, especially the holidays or what have you. But as a school committee member, as a parent, I do feel, to your point, as far as the strategic initiatives and progress in the district, I do enjoy hearing from the principals, I do enjoy hearing about the technology updates. I do enjoy the presentations when all of the data on MAP testing is done. Like, I think that's important for us as committee members to have that direct reporting in from the schools, because it's, if you look at everyone on the committee, we have kids at all different levels in the school. So personally, right now, I can only directly relate to what's going on in the high school level based on my interaction with parents, because it's mostly at the high school level, you, the younger grades. But when the principals come in or, you know, other different programs supported by the school, I think it gives you a holistic perspective, so you can better support the district in a lot of your decision-making. So I kind of see the balance of what Ellen's saying with what you're saying, so maybe we need to take a step back and pick.
I'm not looking to give myself extra work or anything, but I, we would be, we would be doing ourselves a disservice to not have two meetings.
So two things, first of all, I was not proposing that we get away from having those strategic plan presentations.
Okay, it just, it did sound a little bit.
No, and, and I think, I think that needs to be a part of what we do, and I fully recognize that in going to a monthly meeting, we may go from having a ninety-minute monthly meeting to perhaps a two-hour a month, you know what I'm saying? Instead of a ninety-minute bi-weekly meeting, abandon being a two-hour, two-hour and fifteen monthly meeting. It, it'll be longer, I understand that, which the move back to six-thirty may, may help address that. I was also thinking, you know, talking with John, for example, John makes a monthly presentation on where we are financially. That presentation can be done via email to the committee on a monthly basis, and John can come quarterly to update us. There's absolutely no reason why John needs to go over the revolving funds on a monthly basis.
But we want to hear from John.
We do, but.
I think we should just continue having our business meeting every single month, but that's my personal opinion.
So, so this sounds more like a debate of the content of the meetings, rather than the number of meetings. So maybe, can we like, table this and talk more about what our hopes are for the, the function of the meetings? And then, you know.
And, and I also fully recognize that we can, we can adjust it back the other way, if we find that the business of the committee is not getting done.
But here, here's the, here's the other perspective, and perhaps we need to discuss this further. It's easy now to say, if we decide we need another meeting, we can schedule it.
It's hard for us to actually do it.
For subcommittees, it's even hard to get meetings scheduled. And if you have to, you know, have business of the committee done by a certain time, it's harder, because we post, you know, the meetings have to be posted, all of that. But also, to Amanda's point as far as content, and your point as well, we could go from having meetings twice a month to once a month, but personally, I would rather have an hour and a half meeting twice a month than potentially a two-and-a-half to three-hour meeting once a month, or maybe four, because even some of our normal meetings can go potentially long, depending on public comment and the topic at hand. So I think that's something else you have to consider. The agenda, which, you know, the chair and the superintendent decide on, can vary from week to week.
Correct.
And if we have a really heavy meeting, some of that can potentially be pushed off to the second meeting of the month, depending on, on what it is. But if we have one meeting a month, we're kind of stuck.
Yep.
So I don't know.
So we need, we need to have more discussion about what the purpose of our meetings is, because the meet, the purpose of the, the core meet, purpose of the meeting is to conduct the business of the school committee. And it is important to have these other presentations, but it is not the purpose of the public meeting of the school committee. There, there may be other ways to accomplish that as well.
So I, I work at the will of the school committee, so if you tell me we're going to meet every day at seven PM for three hours, we're going to do that, okay? However, I do, I just, I want to, I, I just want to say this about Dr. Williams, Jay Phelan, John Shea. When they know they have to present, it does take a while for them to put things together. They also have their regular job, and not, and I'm not taking away from anybody that, nobody else has a regular job and they have to do these things. For John or for me, I mean, I'm the one who said, John, this is how this has got to look. It took him and I a while to figure out, this is what it's going to look like, and this is how, because it's easy now for you to get it. And I look at him, say, yeah, this, you do this all the time, make it look like this, because it's easy for me to read, it's easy for you to read, and then they can ask questions. Dr. Williams, it's easy for her to look at I Ready? You know what I'm going to say. It's easy to look at I Ready and her to say, or for her, for Dr. Williams, for Kate Byrne to say, wow, we really went down here. We, we went down in conceptual thinking, we went down here. Whereas when they, when we, when they have to present, or when they, when you'd like them to present, it takes them a minute to figure out what is the best way. It's taken me six years to put together this evaluation that I think that we've got to a point where is much easier for all of us to understand what I'm trying to show you in an easier fashion. I just want to make sure, when we went to those two meetings, I was part of that. I was the one who said, let's follow the, this so that you see the curriculum work, and you see the work, the real work that goes on in a school system, and then there's the business meeting. I think I've gotten better at getting through a meeting. I think John's gotten better getting through a meeting, I think Dr. Williams, a very articulate speaker. She can, she does very well getting through a meeting. If we know what, what, like you just said, what they want, you know, I, your former boss, Dr. Oakley. Dr. Oakley was very succinct. If you've ever watched her meeting, she went, da-ding, 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 looked up and said, okay, I'm out of here in twenty-five minutes, we've got you done. And then would have a meeting where the principals would come in. There's, there's different ways of holding meetings. The two meetings have been good. I think September's a tough meeting, a tough, September's good because I think that we start off school and you want to hear a lot of things for two meetings. October, our legs start to get a little shaky. That might be a, a place where we put in for two meetings, but if I say to Tim, can we hold off on an October meeting? November, we know that that's going to be Thanksgiving, and you've got a lot of things going on with the Thanksgiving Day game and all that. Christmas, with the Christmas concerts, we are out every night, and so are you, visiting the, the concerts, and we're going to be back to that next year. January is a good month for, January, February are really big subcommittees for John and myself with the Subcommittee in Finance and the budgets. And then March, it's, we could probably have a meeting a week in March. So just, that's just, I, I'm coming from where these guys, because I know that there was times for John, I think in February, maybe two years ago, where he was pumping to get this information out to you, because he knew he had to come in with it. But having a subcommittee on a Tuesday night, then going to a team meeting on a, I mean, a, a Monday night subcommittee, then coming back out on a Tuesday and having two meetings with the capital committee or finance committee, it's a lot of work on that, that budget end. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when we do this. And I, I just want to put that two cents in from my office to say, we'll do whatever you want us to do and however you want us to set it up, and we'll get better at, like you said, if you want him to just, if you want us to send the budget out to you, we'll send it out, we'll send the financials out to you. We don't like, you know that we don't like to do that, we won't do that in budget season. John and I will not put it online and send it to you. We'll let you look at it in the office, you can come in and ask us question, ask John questions all day, but it can't leave the office until it's been voted upon by you all. And we do that, we do that, you know, Chief Herron does that, Chief Police does that. We all do that because we want to make sure that nothing goes out before everybody has, is in agreement. So as a, as a town, we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, our committee, their committees, or the selectmen and us have a, and you have an agreement to say, okay, let's move forward.
But to your point specifically, you know, for what John presents and the information, a lot of it is he's just sitting here and feeding numbers, this and that.
And I didn't, and I didn't mean to downplay what John does.
No, no.
Does that every day, sits there.
Hard numbers to get.
No, but, but, but what I'm trying to say is, I, I understand where, you know, John could provide us certain information via email, but a lot of times, questions around numbers and budget don't come to the forefront. But a lot of times, questions around numbers and budget don't come to the forefront, until it's in an open discussion. And if we were to eliminate that part of the meeting, not eliminate, but you know, if John were to change how he gave us that information, I might not be prompted to ask as in-depth questions as if I'm in person. Because, you know, one question leads to another question, and if you don't have the open forum, you're not gonna hear someone else's question, which might spark a question in you. And where budget is such a key part of our oversight.
Plus, you might have one person getting one piece of information.
But that's what I mean. In the interpretation of those numbers, and where budget is, is one of our main oversights, I think that could potentially cause a disservice to us as a committee.
So, I, I agree with that with budget, because that is a significant part of our, our group as a committee. And I know I'm speaking from my lens of the last year, where, excuse me, I think a lot of the school committee here and everywhere's role in the last year has been as an information source for the community. Because, excuse me, so much of this was coming, I mean, I remember, Liz, you said, we got off the phone with the commissioner twenty minutes ago, hot off the presses, right? But I think that that type of information sharing is not the purpose of the committee. And while we should be aware of what's going on in curriculum and things like that too, I think that potentially that's getting away at the power of the, the district to communicate with parents and stuff. That, like, again, if it's around budget, we should have those questions, but we don't set curriculum. It's great to see how that impacts policy and everything else. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have a quarterly update from all of these things, but I think that, my experience, and again, I think it was warranted for this last year, was that so much of the folks that I talked to, the communication they were getting was from watching these meetings about the district. And again, that was warranted, but I don't know that that's the purpose of the committee completely.
It's not completely, but certainly we're an extension of the school by default. And I know.
This year wasn't normal.
No, that's what Amanda said, yeah. You know, this year, we, we were in a different capacity, because we were truly more direct liaisons, because we had that forefront information. But, I, I, I understand we have the business of the committee to conduct and keep in purview, but I also think that there's a benefit to having different updates and sources of information, especially if you're a parent and you have kids in the district. You tend to field a lot of questions, which, you know, I tend to direct along, contact the principal, or, you know, contact guidance. I don't try to speak on behalf of the school, but it's helpful to have some educated information, because as a parent with kids in the district, you're naturally going to be, you know, asked a lot of questions, and it's nice to have some valid talking points, I guess.
So why don't we leave it at this? Why don't we table this as a discussion point for a future meeting? I do intend to present to the committee a proposed calendar at the end of the year that would, at least as the superintendent indicated, have singular meetings in November, December, maybe even January, and then we'll see how the end of the year goes. I, I recognize that there are times when it is necessary to have more than one per month, but I, I just think I would like the committee to be more narrowly focused on the business of the committee during our time here, rather than, you know, the megaphone for the district, if you will.
And, I've said this, I've, I've said this before, and I'll say it again. The principals hold meetings. They ask parents to go to meetings. At Central School, lots of parents go to meetings. At Mitchell School, it gets a little bit less. And then when it gets to the high school, it's, well, you know. Be informed, get involved, be pro-solution, instead of, be proactive, instead of reactive, as, as Amanda I think is trying to say. This year was, was different, and we try, I try to give out a lot of information, because it's, it's difficult to get to us right now. However, every school has a meeting, whether it's the school improvement team meeting, whether it's town, student council, uh, school council meeting, whether it's EB Hope, and we're an extension of that, no matter, EBCC meets with us. Whatever group it is, people need to be involved. You know, and, and, that's how you move the schools.
Yeah, and I think it's through these meetings with you or others that we get that, and, and talking to the chair, that we get that information on a, an agenda, so that the community can know more about it and things like that. But like, yeah, anyway, yeah, I agree.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I like your, your point, to come up with a meeting calendar, right? With those months that it would be better to have one meeting.
Sure.
So, I think that's the best approach.
All right, thank you. John, the budget.
I've been sitting there all this time. Budget that no one cares about.
John, I, I came to your defense.
Rapidly.
So, if the first page in your package has the incorrect dates, the numbers are correct, but the dates are incorrect. Hello and welcome to the new members.
My office is always open.
Except Monday afternoon, late afternoons.
Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon.
Friday afternoon.
Eleven o'clock to one. Joanne.
So the, the, the first worksheet I'll be presenting is the one on the operating budget. And this is an update at April twenty-second. What I do with this is I compare this year to last year, at the, at the same time last year, just to give you an idea of whether we're on track with last year or not. The first column there is appropriated, which is our bu, our budget, and it's broken down non-salary and salary. Second column is labeled expense, and that's what we've actually paid for so far this year. Incumbre is what we have a purchase order on, but we haven't paid for yet. And so, total expense and then available balance. You can see non-salary line. We have an appropriation of three-point-three million. We've, if you take expense and what we promised to pay through POs, we've, have a total expense of two-point-eight, and available balance of four-hundred-seventy-five thousand for the remainder of the year. Last year at this time, we had an available balance of a hundred-seven thousand. So compared to last year, and we know last year we met budget, so compared to last year, you can see we're, we're doing very well, and we will meet budget again this year.
John, why do you think there's such a difference between last year and this year at this point?
There's, we had one student that moved. A residential student moved out of state. That was a savings of about two-hundred thousand.
Wow.
See, that student moved partway through the year. Had that student remained through, through the year, our available balance would have been two-hundred thousand less, so two, two-hundred-seventy-five thousand. That, that's the main thing. We do have, obviously, kids weren't here full-time, all the time, so we, we do have less expenses too. Any questions on that?
None.
And for the new members, behind these summaries, there's accounting reports. And again, if, if you'd like to come in, I'm happy to meet with you and show you those accounting reports and budgets, or whatever you'd like to, like to see.
Thank you.
The next worksheet is the revolving fund balance report. This gives you a snapshot of our revolving fund balances at April twenty-second compared to last year. And then also, I have listed the last two, three, seven years, year-end balances. School lunch, about a hundred-and-five thousand right now. We have seen with all the students back, revenue increasing, so that will continue to improve through the end of the year.
How does revenue increase on school lunch when it's free lunch for all students?
Because we get reimbursed for free lunch.
But it's pretty much a zero-sum game for the reimbursement, isn't it? Do we make money off the reimbursement?
We do.
Oh, okay. I didn't think the reimbursement covered more than our, I thought it just covered basically our costs on the, on the meals. No? Okay.
And we only have twenty, we only have twenty-two percent free. I have like twenty-two percent free and reduced.
Right, but I'm saying all the kids are free. But, so what I thought what the government was reimbursing this year, I mean, I know that the reimbursement rate doesn't really cover much more typically than the cost of the meal. So you're saying that we're actually, when the kids are getting, when we're getting reimbursed, we're still making money off that reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
Jeff Von does a good job.
Yes.
For sure.
Circuit breaker, five-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand. School choice, we have an available balance in that account of seven-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand. Athletics, forty-eight thousand. Preschool is a negative balance. I think I've mentioned this before, that that will be a positive balance by the end of the year. And then, sped tuitioned in has a positive balance, thirty-four thousand. School building rental, pretty consistent with last year at a hundred-and-forty-two. Busing fees, one-twenty-three.
John, just as far as the busing, I, I know that kids have been remote, but the structure of busing was so different. I actually expected us to be past what we spent last year, just because of the structure of busing. You know what I mean? Because there were more bus runs, because there were fewer kids.
We still had a contract, though.
But the contract, it really did a good job keeping everything right in balance. I just didn't expect that the numbers would fall that close.
Right, so we use the busing fees to pay for, also pay for crossing guards, monitors, and things like that. So, before and after-school care, a pretty significant decrease. Again, that has, will continue to pick up through the end of the year with more kids in the program. So for the, for the new members, what this revolving funds are different than the, than the school operating budget. These are accounts where we deposit money for these different items, and you, and spend with school committee approval for things on these different accounts.
John, do we have end-of-the-year spend-down requirements in circuit breaker or school choice?
We do.
Okay.
Circuit breaker, we, we have a spend-down of approximately three-hundred-and-seventy, or three-hundred, four-hundred, four-hundred thousand. So what we do with circuit breaker, we need to spend down, we, we cannot keep in that account more than one year's, more than last year's revenue. So what we do with circuit breaker is what we will be doing, starting in a couple of weeks or so, we'll use that four-hundred thousand we need to spend to prepay next year's tuitions.
Gotcha.
And that, that's, that's in our budget. We take that into account in our budget. That's, that's, you know, a lot of towns, we use the circuit breaker money that they received this year for this year's expenses. We do a good job. We use the circuit breaker money we received this year for next year's expenses, so.
School choice doesn't have a spend-down?
No.
Okay.
But we will use school choice, and we also have ESR funds that are coming in, and that, that should help us support a lot of the lost time on learning. That's where we're going to be looking at putting some of the funding in. So Dr. Williams is looking at staffing and creating more hands-on, and getting more teachers involved. And in the summer, the ramp-up after-school programming, we are looking at doing a robust after-school enrichment next year and offering transportation, so.
Yeah, the ESR two grant, five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, I, I still need to file that. That's due July first, but we will be working on that and hopefully filing it within the next couple of weeks.
I say this every time I go over this, and I'll say it again, it just continues to amaze me. This is like a history of the Eastbridge Water Schools, when you look at it. From, you know, I moved here in twenty thirteen, and, and all I remember hearing about when we moved here is, we're cutting things, we're cutting things, we're cutting things, fees are going up. And you can just read across this and see how healthy our district has become. So, kudos to Liz, kudos to John for this.
Thank you.
John, just a quick question.
Sure.
Have all the Chromebooks that we've been waiting for all these months come in?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All the Chromebooks have come in. We are still waiting on AD laptops for teachers.
Really?
But we have been told that they will be in, they said by the end of this month, which is three days, so.
Okay.
And then how is distribution going for those Chromebooks?
Excellent. Unless you, unless you're gonna tell me otherwise.
I just wanted to know.
Huh?
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, as far as I know, we actually have a new staff member in IT. He, he's been great. He's a young kid. He, he fixes Chromebooks. He, he's in charge of really distribution of Chromebooks. So every week, he goes to each of the schools, drops off new ones, picks up the old ones, fixes them, those that can be fixed. So, as far as I know.
I haven't heard anything from students, so it's weird.
And I haven't heard anything from principals or the offices, so.
Thank you, John. Any other questions, John?
No, thank you. That was a great presentation, John.
Public comment. This is Lonigan. Did you wanna say anything?
No.
Action items. I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Go move.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott, I think has to abstain from that one, because he was not at that meeting. Oh, okay. Did you watch it?
I did not.
I would take a motion to, uh, take a motion to approve accounts payable warrant, forty-three SV dated four-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
I take a motion to.
I don't know what that is, and I don't wanna just vote out of turn.
Okay, so if you're not going to vote, could you please, after we vote, say abstain?
Sure. Absolutely.
And I'll go through all of this with you after the meeting, so you know what it is.
Thank you.
Take a mo, where did we leave, PS? Take a motion to approve payroll warrant, forty-four PS, dated four-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one.
Go move.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation timeline as presented.
Go move.
Moved by Trista.
Second.
Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a sheet on the back of our packet here with the name of a student for whom the superintendent, assistant superintendent has reviewed the home education plan. And I would take a motion to approve the home education plan for that student.
Go move.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Trista. All in favor?
Say one thing.
Yes, please.
Going back to the, what we said before.
Oh, excellent.
We really are supposed to get updates on the, on the strategic plan, and so, if, yeah. So, I mean, I urge you, if you have any questions about that, even though it's not under our, it's, it kind of is our umbrella, but it's like,
I understand.
Contact a field rep from the MASE, and they'll be able to.
I understand. Thank you, Ellen.
Welcome.
Tim, just two things. Last week, we missed Administrative Assistant Appreciation Day, or a week, because we were on vacation. That sometimes happens today, here at, in central office. I know the principals have bought lunch and done some other things for their assistants. Today, here in central office, I wanna thank Joanne Benner, Joanne Connors, Lynn McKenny, Amy Stevens, Erica. Erica Christie. I didn't forget Barbara, and Barbara. And Babs. They, we, we could.
We were gonna let you forget.
I know, I know they were. I wasn't. They do a phenomenal amount of work for us, and we couldn't do what we do without them, and we do appreciate them. And I hope that people understand when they call the offices, that they are working for them, that they are getting the answers as quickly as they can. them, that they are getting the answers as quickly as they can for them, and getting back to them as quickly. But that was last week, and we've celebrated that yesterday. And also, I would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that John Shea's birthday was yesterday, and we celebrated yesterday, we celebrated today.
Celebrate tomorrow.
I'm sure tomorrow will be a big celebration, but happy birthday, Mr. Shea.
Happy birthday, John.
Happy birthday, John.
You and Carol Burnett. Carol Burnett's birthday was yesterday, too.
John, how many years? How many years we got?
55.
Ah, happy 55.
All right, thank you.
Take a motion to close the meeting?
So move.
Oh.
Yes.
There is a prom meeting for parents.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, that is virtual.
Okay.
I did, I forgot, Mr. Sylvia did ask me to mention this. You've got to be at the meeting. You've got to check in on the Google Meet, I believe, it's a virtual meeting. And I just, I'm going to, I don't know what was said, because I don't, I don't look at everybody's emails or, or letters to parents, but I know that he really wants to have parents there, and you need to be there if you want your child to go to, your, your child, our student, to go to the prom. I will support him, and I just want to make this very clear. I will support the principal if he denies people getting their tickets for the prom, if they do not go. We have the district attorneys, they come in, they talk about the social host laws, they talk about driving while, driving under the influence. You also have Mr. Sylvia, or Mr. Sylvia going to speak. But it needs, that's important, and it's an hour, I think, I think it's an hour, correct?
It's actually Thursday, not tomorrow.
Oh, is it Thursday?
Thursday, it's 7:00 PM.
I did tell him, I mentioned it, because he came down to see me, and he, he was very concerned that some people, some parents may not get up online, or get up on the virtual meeting.
There's a Google form they have to fill out at the end of the meeting.
Right.
And an email reminder did come out this afternoon, this was.
And he's concerned, because he doesn't want to take that away from anybody, because we've been waiting for it. But it's, I, I don't know, you're all parents, you're all part of the school district, when you are superintendent, principal, administrator, when you're holding an event like this, and once those kids leave, you, you don't sleep that night. Parents are not going to sleep that night. We certainly don't sleep that night. It's a concern for us. We want everybody to be safe, and we, we take, he takes, he's, he's very concerned, because some people call and say, I can't make the meeting. I, I hope that you make the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a motion to close the meeting?
So move.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone. Happy birthday, John.